We'll call the August 5th Williams County Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. Brandon, please take roll.
Barry?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
Bo?
We have a quorum, we will proceed. If everybody please stand for the pledge. Okay, consent agenda, what are the wishes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item D is public comment, this is the spot on the agenda, if you're not on the agenda somewhere else and you have an issue you want to address the commission with, now is the time. And I'm not seeing anyone, so we will move on. Planning and zoning.
Good morning Commissioners, Michelle Halgan with County Planning. The first item we have today is LU-0047-25, which is John Hoffman, who is requesting a conditional use permit to construct a go-kart track within the rural residential zoning district. This location is in sub lot three, which is in the north half of the northwest of section fourteen, township one fifty-four north, range one oh two west, being Judson Township, and Judson Township has recommended approval on this item. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to construct a small go-kart track for his daughter to safely drive her go-kart without being on the public roads. The subject property is approximately fifteen acres and within the rural residential zoning district. The applicant had started construction on the go-kart track prior to applying, as he was unaware that a permit would be necessary. Once he was aware, he did come in to fill out the application and pay the appropriate fees to work through this public hearing process. Access to the subject property is off of Fifty Second Street Northwest. Planning and zoning commission did hear this item on Thursday, July seventeenth, and did recommend approval with a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, is the applicant present? No. Any other comments on this one? What are the wishes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve LU-0047-25.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so the next item I have to date is LU-0048-25, which is Michelle Stewart on behalf of Amanda and Shannon Hurley. They're requesting a conditional use permit for a second dwelling within the rural residential zoning district. This is located in sub lot one of farm unit two oh seven, which is in section thirty, township one fifty-three north, range one oh two west, being in Trenton Township. On this particular project, we did not receive comment back from Trenton Township. The applicant is requesting the conditional use permit to place an additional single-family residence on the subject property. The property is within the rural residential zoning district and is approximately three acres. The applicant will be leasing a portion of the land to place a seventy-six by thirty manufactured home on the property. According to the applicant, the subject property has three wells already and two septic tanks on it. Access to the property is taken off of Forty Third Street Northwest. When planning and zoning did hear this item, they did recommend approval seven to zero on this one as well.
Okay, is the applicant present on this one? No? Okay, any other comments on it? Okay, what are the wishes?
Move to approve, following staff comments.
Second?
Moved in second, any discussion? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Cory?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so the next item we have is LU-0049-25. This is Andrew Pocus on behalf of Benjamin Rosland. They're requesting a zone change to the urban residential zoning district for four newly proposed lots. This is located in the south half of the northeast of section sixteen, township one fifty-seven north, range one oh one west, being Blacktail Township. Blacktail Township is undecided on their recommendation, as one member is in favor, one is not in favor, and a third abstained as he is the property owner. The applicant is requesting a minor subdivision, which will create five lots in total. The parent parcel on this is seventy-eight acres and within the agricultural zoning district. The newly created lots will be approximately one point five two acres, two point three six acres, two point four six acres, two point four two acres, and then the larger lot will be the remainder of the parcel. The applicant is requesting the zone change to urban residential zoning district for the four smaller lots that are being proposed. The purpose of this minor subdivision is to create smaller residential lots near Blacktail Lake. The minor subdivision draft plot is still being worked on by the surveyor and once submitted will go through the administrative review process with the appropriate county departments. Recordation of the draft plot will be contingent on the approval of the zone change. Access to the subject property is taken off of Blacktail Drive. On this particular one, when planning and zoning heard this item on Thursday, July seventeenth, they did recommend to deny it with a vote of five to two.
Okay, is the applicant present?
Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, my name is Andrew Pocus. I am the applicant representing Ben Rosland. Little background, me and Ben are both from the area, Ben's family has owned the property around Blacktail forever. I'm from the area, my farm about a mile and a half north of here. And being friends, we were talking about it, we'd like to see more people be able to build and be at Blacktail. Namely, I was asking Ben if I could possibly do something, and he said, yeah, why don't we see if we could do a couple of small subdivisions? And we were looking around and, you know, we saw the big projects that were going on out there with the Williams County Park, you know, doing beautiful things out there, redoing the boat ramp, spending money doing a bypass around, a lot of a lot of great things are happening out there right now. And really feel strongly that more people could be and maybe should be able to participate in that in an ownership type setting. Another thing, I saw the, you know, the Williams County builder and buyer incentive, I mean, I think it's important that, to recognize that, you know, outside city limits, Williams County notices that we want more building, we want more new homes, we want more of that, this would do that. And around infrastructure that already exists with the roads, with the rural water that's already there. I did speak with Barkey, Mr. Barkey with Rural Water, with WAS, and they ran extensive, they ran studies before the upgrades were done for Williams County at the park board about the capacity of the rural water in this area. And he assured me that it was plenty sufficient for what we were asking for, so. I appreciate your consideration and I'll stay over here if there's any questions.
Thank you. If anybody else has comments, now would be the time, if you do want to come up to the mic, you need to just introduce yourself for the record. Okay, come on up.
Hi, I'm Kelly Ebersson, and I'm opposed to developing out at Blacktail like that, because I think once a minor subdivision is approved, we're going to see more people wanting. It's not, we've got lion owners around the lake, it might not be them that own the land right now, but their kids at some point in time come in and say, well, you approved Drew and Ben, we want to develop the rest of the land around Blacktail and put housing all the way around Blacktail. And, you know, Drew's saying that, he's told us in the past that they, if they do this subdivision, they're not going to put any roads in or any power in or any water, and it's up to whoever buys the raw land to do that at their own expense, it wouldn't be organized in that, but but I'm, you know, we're definitely against it, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
My name is Don Aggie, president of Blacktail Dam Association. With what the county's doing out there, unbelievable project, awesome, you guys, appreciate everything you're doing out there. That lake is not big enough, if any of you have ever been out there on holiday weekends and, you know, and seen how packed it is now, by the time they get done with the upgrades out there, that's going to be a go-to destination for campers out there, believe me, it is. And we haven't had the infrastructure in over thirty years since I had my first place out there. Has not been improved out there, other than rural water coming in and people doing their own septics and stuff on it. We don't have the infrastructure out there to handle more residents out there. And like Kelly had said, if you approve this thing, it will open the floodgates on it. We will have building all over the place out there. And what they think now that the infrastructure can handle it, the more you build out there, it's only going to get worse and worse, you guys. We got to be thinking ahead on this thing, because it isn't just a thing right now, that's the decision right now, just a few places, because we all know what's going to happen. Like I say, we appreciate everything the county and the parks and everybody has done for us out there. Every improvement out there has been beneficial to the residents out there. You know, we live out there year-round on it, the people that live out there year-round on it, we deal with that three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And it just, you know, we put gravel down on roads and within a week or two, that gravel is gone out there. And you start bringing more people in, because like I say, you'll pack the pack, the campgrounds out there once this is done, because it is going to be something special for Williams County. So I hope you guys take everything in mind that people have said at the planning and zoning commission, because it was overwhelmingly not being approved by residents out there. And look ahead for many years here, what's going to happen out there. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Mike Smith, for the record. Seems like we just went through this, I was at the planning and zoning commission meeting. And there's two parcels, the first one got defeated five to two, the second one died for lack of a second. There's a reason for that. There was a reduction in lots at one time, there's been a reduction of lots out there by people buying more than one and developing on them. That's, there's a reason for that, it's because everything out there right now is mashed together, it's overtaxed, and by overtaxed, I mean overused. No, I don't. But the roads, I mean, the roads indicate that, the water indicates that, the water pressure drops. The lake traffic underwater indicates that. And if you open this up to developments like this, and they say there's going to be no more, it's not, it's just opens a Pandora's box in my humble opinion. So, I feel like I'm just repeating what I said at the previous meeting, but that's kind of how I feel, I live out there year-round too, by the way, so. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Good morning, my name's Greg Zavolny. I spoke at the planning and zoning meeting where this was defeated. And I think you should take into the consideration what the planning and zoning board has done and legwork on it, and then how they decided to vote on it. The overcrowding is an issue, it has been for years. If you guys approve this, I mean, this isn't really a problem, but it will be if, once a campground's opened and you got, say, fifty-five new full-service sites, that's going to bring a lot more people in in itself. And if it gets to the point where the residents that already own property and are paying their taxes for years and years, can't get out on the lake because of overcrowding, that's kind of a disservice to them. When the new campground's open, if it's full every weekend, there may be an issue where you guys are going to have to make a decision to limit road traffic, or the game and fish is going to have to do something. That's going to be a, the more residents that go out there, it's going to be a bigger concern. So, I'm going to throw a whole different angle at this thing. When I was still on the park board a few years ago, I was talking to Senator Brad Beckett all about this. And we were talking about Blacktail not being big enough for all the residents that want to be there. And he said, "I am willing to help you guys down in Bismarck," he said, "I'll go through every angle and channel I can to try to raise enough funds to build a new dam at Blacktail to triple the size of the lake." And I thought that was a pretty good idea. Blacktail Dam is rated a high-risk dam. It's got leakage, it's got a problem, we know of that. Personally, I don't think it's safe to put a subdivision on the back corner of the dam because of that. And the Rosland property, there's a couple of different Roslands involved, I think there's only three property owners that go from the back of the dam down to the highway ten, where the creek crosses there. And that's about a mile and a half down there. And that would be the perfect location for a proposed new dam. The game and fish estimates that it would take about twenty million dollars to rebuild the dam if that goes out. And the game and fish doesn't really want ownership of that dam. They're more than willing to give it to another entity. But I think the state water board has control of most of the dams. So, when Blacktail was built, it was a cooperative project between the Williams County Park Board, the state water board, and the game and fish department. So, with all the money flying around nowadays in Bismarck and here and wherever, okay, you guys are putting thirty-some million dollars into the county parks, okay? If it takes twenty to thirty million to build a new dam, and you can get government help, state help, county help, I think that's the way to go. Ben and Drew, well, Ben being the landowner, is very more beneficial to him if we had another mile and a half of lake and he owns that land. The downside of the dam, it's all creek and drainage land, that's not his prime farm ground. That's all grassland and creek bottom down there. So, you know, they could work with the county and planning and zoning and put in some nice subdivisions down there, and they could pick the prime spot on the lake for their own residents. That is my take on it. I would be willing to even work on this project. I've worked for Blacktail and the park board basically my whole life. And I thought I'd gotten out of it, but now I've been thrown back into it again, so. If that's a project that the county and those guys want to undertake, I've had skin in this game for a long time. They are, right now, the way they're proposing it, they're just taking land that they already have and just trying to throw it out to public to gain some money and revenue from it, so they can build their own house. Well, if they put a little skin in the game and help us with a project like this, I'd be all for that. There's a lot more money involved for Ben and everyone else that owns land right there, if they do a buyout on that land and build a new dam and increase the size of the lake with more residents on it. If you guys approve it the way it is now, you're just asking for more phone calls, more problems due to overcrowding. You're going to have to deal with the residents that have supported this and showed up at the meetings to oppose it. And you guys are the ones who are going to have to take the phone calls and the game and fish, and it, it's already overcrowded on the weekends, so. There's a lot of the older people out there, they won't even go on the lake on the weekend right now, because they don't want to get banged and bounced around, so. If we could put a plan together and everybody worked together on it, I think that's the best solution, increase the size of Blacktail, it's been too small for years, so. I'm willing to work with Drew or Ben, anybody, the park board, anybody that wants to work on that project. I'll volunteer my time to help with it, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning, gentlemen, my name is Brad Hinchin, I live out at Blacktail full-time. All of you know me. I just want to reiterate the points of safety, which is the lake and fire. We are in a situation where if we open this up, we're going to have a lack of fire department response. And I brought this up at the planning and zoning, and I said I would look it up and work on it as long as I can. I am in the midst of pushing this subject where we can get Williston Rural Fire to respond for out there. Their quicker response, time-wise, road-wise, volunteer-wise. Right now, we have Alamo, which is probably the farthest from us, and the slowest response time. Granora would be secondary, and then Williston number one. So I'll continue to work on that, but it really does bring in the idea of open up this or these two subdivisions, and what do we call the end of it? We don't call the end of it, once you open it, you know there's going to be more. At one time or another, possibly in the near future, maybe farther out. The other thing is the road. The county park board has to always approve money for this road. And the road is going to be used even more. Now, for camping, nah, not so much more, because it's going to be right in the primary area of the camping area will be, get the most usage, and that's all paved. But the rest of the road and the usage of the road will get heavier and heavier, and we will have more costs involved in that. That road is, and when they mentioned earlier, someone mentioned, every two weeks, it's not even enough to blade it every two weeks. I just, it was just bladed a week and a half ago, and it's been five days after that, I could, my truck goes sideways on all the, all the washboards. I talked to Jeremy about it again, and he said he'd have somebody out there, if it rains today, hopefully we get rain out there, they're going to blade it tomorrow. But it doesn't hold up, and the blading, I mean, honestly, the blading takes half, half the washboard out. The rest of the washboard's still there, and you are bouncing all over the place, and this is all behind the dam. All primarily behind the dam. We do have FedEx and UPS come out there, and they get stuck in the fall, they get stuck in the spring, on the hills, on the road. In the middle of the road, they're stuck, because the road just turns to mush. That is a problem, and it's all behind that dam for the most part, and the other end where they have the steep slope or the steep incline and decline there. Those are my two primaries, I know the water situation, I did talk to the water engineers, and they do say that we do have enough water at this time out there, and if they had to, they could always add a line or enlarge a line. The other thing is private land ownership and doing what you want with it. I'm a firm believer in that. But you also have to look at if someone wanted to put in, and I've mentioned this before to a few individuals, someone wanted to put in a hog farm. It's their land, they can do what they want, but they are going to get an argument from your constituents, from the people who surround that land, they are going to get an argument, and that's why this argument's here, because we believe we have enough out there, or more than enough people. We have a hundred and thirty-some parcels of land, we have approximately a hundred and five landowners. I'm not sure what we're at full-time, I think it's in the thirties, thirty-some individuals are full-time landowners or or full-time residents around Blacktail. During the weekdays, it's not too bad, weekends, it does get really busy out there. And I'm looking at, what are we going to do if we add more homes out there? Not this, not just these homes, but more homes. We, we need, we need sheriff's department out there almost full-time, we're almost a small city now, especially during the summer. Especially during the summer. And that's a whole, that's a big, that's a big undertaking, that's not an overnight item. We're kind of, with this subdivisions, we're almost putting the cart ahead of the horse. I know it's been said to me many times to see if we can develop Blacktail into a small city or town. And that's what may have to happen at some point, because if we grow any larger by fifteen, twenty full-time residents, we're about there, we're busting at the seams, we're at the point where we need a lot of full-time services, and that's more county expenses. And I just, I just would like to see this slow down a little bit. I'd like to see it reorganized, let's say, and we can maybe put the horse back in front of the cart, because I think we're going to open up a huge can of worms. What I think doesn't mean that's what's going to happen, but it's a strong possibility. That's all, thank you very much.
Thanks, Brad. Anyone else?
Good morning, gentlemen, thanks for hearing me, my name is Charlie Soto, I live out there full-time at Blacktail. What the last two gentlemen came up and said made perfect sense to me. If you want to invest in Blacktail, we should expand the lake, because right now, I don't know how many acres the lake is, but it's just a small bowl where you could use it, the rest is all fingerlings into homes, which is very small. Right now, the lake is at full capacity, and what the county done out there with the new camping is tremendous, it's just going to bring in more people, which is great, everybody should be allowed to use it. But with all those camping spots, you know it's going to bring in a lot of people, it's not just a camping spot, it's ten people per camping spot, I mean, they're going to have a lot of people out there. Right now, the lake is overflooded, when you get people out there, you can't even use it. My concern is about, you're going to start seeing more accidents, that's for sure. And hopefully, no deaths, and the other thing is, is the conservation out there is, there's just wildlife everywhere, there's moose everywhere, there's antelope, there's deer. I imagine you're going to start seeing more with all the more traffic, more accidents with that. Again, I'd like to reiterate about the fire department, we, right now, you're at risk of fire, you know, to get a fire department out there, if you're going to start expanding subdivisions, you're going to start needing to building stuff like that, same with the police department, you're going to, you know, more people coming in is just going to prevent, is just going to bring in more crime. And you're going to need, if anything out there happens, the call to the police department, it's a long response to get out there. Again, the road, there needs to be some kind of study on this, because there's a lot of elements in this that ain't considered than just saying, okay, do it. You need to consider all the traffic, you need to consider the crime, you need to consider the risk of fire, police department. You need to consider all the traffic, you need to consider the crime, you need to consider the risk of fire, police departments. Um, once you do approve a subdivision like this, it's just gonna open up the gates for more. You you, it's hard to say no to the next person when you've already approved this person. I'm all, I'm all for somebody doing what they want with their own land, but this is different, this is more of a a business venture. And you're always telling people what they can or where they can't put their business because you're doing zoning and you're doing. Studies that that are feasible to what the business is gonna do. Um, I just think that you need to do more study on this and take in consideration all the traffic in there, it's a small lake. Um, and I think if you wanna invest out there for people to use it and capitalism, you would, you would take that money. And expand somehow to expand it for everybody else to use it, cause right now, it's just at full capacity, especially with the high risk dam, so. Um, I I um wish anybody else here that that's at Blacktail would step up, just to let you know how we feel about it. Um, even if you reiterate what was been said, um, just asking you to take in consideration of that. And I think, I think there should be more studies out there than just approving it, you should take in consideration all those elements. So thanks again for hearing me, gentlemen, have a great day.
Thank you. Uh, is, does anybody have anything uh new to add that we haven't uh haven't kinda covered here or? One more time, anybody have anything new to add to the conversation? Okay, we're gonna turn it over to the board. Uh, discussion, questions, gentlemen, if you have a question for anybody, you can sure feel free to ask it at this point. The button on the mic is the one you push.
Just did some rough math, uh, we're, thanks for the numbers, by the way, Brad. Uh, so you have a hundred and five landowners around the lake. We're looking at four additional, it's roughly four percent increase in landowners or lots. And uh, it's a fairly small number, but. Uh, one other comment and I appreciate Brad bringing this up and this is a perfect opportunity, everybody around me is tired of hearing this, but. Uh, Blacktail has the every opportunity to become a city. And then you have your own control, your own government, you're not dependent upon the the county uh to for anything. You can take care of your stu- your own stuff. And so I would highly encourage you to incorporate as a city and uh that way you can, you can take care of your own business in your own area. So with that, that's, that's my only comment.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I too, I'm going to make a motion that we approve LU dash zero zero four nine dash two five.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Well, I would second it for discussion, I would like to ask Brad, um. So when we're talking about increased use and whatnot, out of the hundred and five lots, correct? So on the busier weekends and I'm I'm guessing, you know, cause I I'm at the other end of the county, but uh. If if you, if the landowners or the lot owners up there, if they allow camp, extra campers come onto their property for a weekend, two weekends, the summer, whatever. That it it just seems, I just get the feeling that, you know, it's okay for the lot owners up there to double up or more than that. To increase the use of the roads and the water and all that business, but then a new uh four more lots across the road. That evidently is a bridge too far or?
Oh, okay, I'll call it a bridge too far. No.
I mean, you you you.
It's, that is a point, it is a point, yes, it's, it's very true. Um, I won't deny that. Uh, and uh, I for one have uh a large driveway and I I put uh three to, three to four campers in my driveway. Or annually, same, same time every year, Fourth of July. Um, and the usage is probably. We don't, I would say as far as most cabins, no, majority don't. Majority probably have just their cabins or their homes. But there are those few, uh, probably I'd say a handful of us that do add to our own properties or.
And and I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to get to the point.
No, 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 I understand.
I mean, I just wanted to.
The point is, is that what is going to be four or eight more home sites. And uh, I guess uh, year round. I don't, I look, the road is, the road is tough during the summer. The road is horrendous during the winter. It can be, unless, unless we stay good and cold and then thaw immediately and that's it, it's over. That never happens, you know that, so I mean, you you've graded roads for years, you know that. And so we we have that issue, that road and it's costly. I mean, we all know how much this, that road costs and majority of the problem on that road is not where the cabins are, behind the cabins. It's behind the dam and the other end, the the west end. It's, it's almost, it's, it gets to the point where it's, it's almost dangerous. Uh, I I just had a a pole behind trailer with a, with a side by side on it the other day. And my truck at twenty miles an hour, my truck was sideways and my trailer was sideways. And that was going down the road behind the dam, going down it. I mean, it's, it's, it's ridiculous, you gotta go to a ten mile an hour and and I do it, I'm used to it, I've I've dealt with it long enough. But it, you know, it's just, you're going to add to these homes and let's say you have a family of 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 four. You usually have two vehicles per home, so that's going to be six or yeah, sixteen more vehicles on the road every day if they're full time out there. And that's, the four behind the dam are the, are the ones that are really probably the biggest question mark, the biggest issue. And there's a lot of room to build back there. Uh, those four lot sites can be expanded up the hill and and still be on Ben's land. Um, and then on the other, on the, on the north side of the dam, behind all the cabins, there's quite a bit of land up there, it is beautiful, panoramic to the lake. And there can be much more built up there. Um, I I I don't look at it today as much as several of us had mentioned, the future. And that's where the future really is my question mark. You can't draw the line, you guys, you you all know that. Once you open it now, it's, it's pretty much a done deal, I mean, there's some, something changes because of those eight home sites. Something changes and it's a negative, then you can, then you have something to stand on.
I I would, I would agree, but you know, we're not opening up the gates now. The gates were open when they put them lots there to begin with.
Absolutely, but the county park board did it with what intention? To you, to to have cabins along the lake? Not to have homes built back off the lake and off the lake and off the lake and to eventually have a small city out there. That wasn't the intention of the county park board. I think their vision was to just have a recreational lake with.
Well, I I don't think we can speculate on what their vision was, so that's not one that we, I mean, and I get what you're saying, Brad, but I, I mean, I.
Yeah.
That's not something.
And 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 I do know that when I spoke with a couple of old timers out there from years back, that lake was originally intended to be another half mile. Longer down the valley on that east side. It was supposed to go to the uh, to the, well, it's township road, it's a minimum maintenance and I think it's cut off now. Because the creek and they just, there's a.
To the west or to the?
To the east.
To the east.
Yeah. Uh, and that was the original intention from what I was told and for some reason, they they dialed it back. Um, I, I just, it's, it's the infrastructure that I really hang my hat on, on this one, is that it's just questionable. Again, I'd rather have everything in place or have an idea of a plan in place than just throw a bunch of homes out there and then some more homes at some other point. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna comment, I appreciate the stewardship of the landowners around a Blacktail dam. Sometimes there's a fine line between ownership and possession. And I think if we disallow the development of this property on the backside of the dam, I think we're sending. A very negative message to private landowners, I'm very concerned about that. And just a reminder to something that the landowners are al- already know, you own the land around Blacktail dam, you don't own Blacktail dam. And uh, it is for public recreation and public use, so that's my comments.
And all we really wanna do is report that it, how, how busy or overcrowded it can be. This summer has been a, just a, it's been wonderful this summer because we have that, we have, we have, you know, we're, we're like fifty or seventy-five percent. Lower in recreation on the water and it has been a godsend, plus the rains we've had, uh, have kept the the lake very clean and clear. We've had, we've, we've had, we have issues otherwise.
Thanks, Brad.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve LU zero zero four nine two five. Brandon, will you take role, please?
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes, motion carried.
Okay, so this next one we have is LU dash zero zero five zero dash two five. Again, Andrew Pocus on behalf of Benjamin Roslin, they're requesting a zone change to the urban residential zoning district for four newly proposed lots. And this is the east half of the southeast, northwest-southeast, northeast-southwest of section ten, township one fifty-seven north, range one oh one west, being Blacktail Township. Um, and Blacktail Township again was undecided on this one for the same reasons as the previous one. The applicant is requesting the minor subdivision, which will create five lots. The parent parcel is approximately a hundred and sixty acres and within the agricultural zoning district. The newly created lots will be approximately two point four seven acres, three point two two acres, two point four one acres and two point five one acres. The larger lot will be the remainder of the parcel. The applicant is requesting the zone change to urban residential zoning district for the four smaller lots that are being proposed. Purpose of this minor subdivision, just like before, is to create smaller residential lots near Blacktail Lake. The minor subdivision draft plat is still being worked on by the surveyor and once submitted, will go through the administrative review process with the appropriate county departments. Recordation of the draft plat will be contingent on the approval of the zone change. Access to the subject lots will be taken off a private access road off Blacktail Dam or Blacktail Drive, excuse me. Um, when Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item, they did recommend denial six to one.
Okay, uh, applicants present, do you have anything to add, anything different? Okay, and uh, we'll, we'll open it up for comments, if there's anything new, I don't know that we have to go through everything again if uh. But if you got something new about this one being in a different spot, uh, please come up to the mic. See nothing, uh, we'll turn it to the board, what are the wishes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve LU dash zero zero five zero dash two five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Any discussion? None, roll call, please.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so this next one is LU dash zero zero five two dash two five. Ed Rintamaki on behalf of Lakeview Development LLC is requesting a zone change to urban commercial for a newly proposed approximately two point eight three acre lot. The location of this is MS fifteen dash zero zero two four and MS fifteen dash zero zero two five, which is in the east half of the northwest. A section nineteen township one fifty-three north, range one oh two west, being Trenton Township. Um, on this particular one, um, we did actually get an email back from Trenton Township and they did say that they have no issues with this development. The applicant is requesting a re-subdivision, which will create three lot minor subdivision. The parent parcels are approximately seventy acres in total and within both the urban residential and urban commercial zoning districts. The newly created lots will be approximately four point five seven acres, two point eight three acres and sixty five point four three acres. The larger sixty five point four three acre lot will remain in the urban residential zoning district. And the four point five seven acre lot is to remain in the urban commercial zoning district. The applicant is requesting a zone change to the urban commercial zoning district for the proposed two point eight three acre parcel. The purpose of this minor subdivision is to create a parcel for a future convenience store within the area. Access to the property is taken off of North Dakota Highway eighteen oh four. The minor subdivision is going through the review process and its recordation will be contingent on the approval of the zone change. The lots are to be known as MS twenty five dash zero zero three one, zero zero three two and zero zero three three. When Planning and Zoning heard this item, on July seventeenth, they did recommend approval seven to zero.
Okay, uh, Ed, you got anything to add? Okay, thank you, um, is there any other comments on this one? Looks like everybody left. So we'll turn it over to the board.
I'd move to approve, uh, as presented with staff comments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so this next one LU dash zero zero five four dash two four or two five, excuse me. Desiree and Samuel Aronson are requesting a variance from the Williams County subdivision regulations. This located in subplot one, um, the north half of the southwest, southeast-southwest, northwest-southeast and southwest-southeast, all located within section twenty seven. Township one fifty-seven north, range one oh three west, which is Strandell Township. Um, Strandell Township did recommend approval on the minor subdivision of this por- property when comment was solicited. However, we did not hear back on the variance portion. The applicant is requesting a variance from the Williams County subdivision regulations regarding the definition of the word parcel. Within our regulations, subdivision is defined as the division of a lot, tract or parcel of land creating five or less lots. Tracks or parcels of land for the purpose, whether immediate or future, of sale or of building development. And which will include the creation of any part of one road easement with the recommenda- recommended one thousand feet in length. Public easements or other rights of way, whether public or private, for access to or from such lots. And the creation of new or enlarged parks, playgrounds, plazas or open spaces providing compliance with this ordinance. Williams County road standards as well as all other applicable statutes, laws, codes, rules and regulations. The word parcel is then defined as land that is contiguous, has a common owner and or has a single parcel ID number. The applicants are currently going through the minor subdivision process. Um, to add additional land to the current parcel known as subplot one. As per the regulations, based on the definitions, the entirety of the parcel containing the north half of the southwest, southeast-southwest and northwest-southeast would need to be platted. The applicants are requesting the, to only be able to plat the northwest-southeast as this is the only portion of that parcel ID that will be affected. Access to the subject property is through private access easement off one fifty-second avenue northwest. The minor subdivision for this pross- property is going through the review process with the lots to be known as MS twenty five dash zero 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 six and zero 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 seven. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item and did recommend approval seven to zero.
Okay, is the applicant present? They are? Come on down, introduce yourself and add what you. Come on down, introduce yourself and add what you feel you want to add.
Morning, my name's Sam Aronson, the one of the applicants, along with my wife here. Basically, all we're trying to do is buy the rest of our yard and just add it kind of into our current subplot. The yard is older, so it needs some improvements, some renovation, new tree rows, maybe buildings in the long-term future. And per what we've been told is to do any of those improvements, you would have to own the property in order to start the start the project, so. The landowners of Hoff's have agreed to sell us the rest of the yard, so it would go from one point two acres roughly to about twelve acres. And just so we can start making improvements there, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board? What are the wishes?
I'd move to approve following staff comments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second at any discussion. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Cory?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, next item we have today is LU dash zero zero five five dash two five. Ed Rintimaki, on behalf of Stephen and Tammy Mueller. They're requesting a zone change to urban residential for a proposed approximately three acre lot. This is located in the northwest of section thirteen township one fifty-nine north, range one oh three west, being Granora Township. We have not received comment back from Granora Township on this item. The applicant is requesting the minor subdivision, which will create two lots. The parent parcel is approximately a hundred and sixty acres and within the agricultural zoning district. The newly created lots will be approximately three point four zero four acres and approximately one fifty-six point three two acres. The larger lot will remain in the agricultural zoning district while the applicant is requesting the zone change to urban residential zoning district for the approximately three point zero four acre lot. The purpose of this minor subdivision is to separate the tillable land from the non-tillable portion that contains outbuildings. The smaller lot is to be sold and will have a single-family home built upon the site. Access to the subject property is taken off of eighty-second Street Northwest and County Road Five. The minor subdivision is going through the review process and the lots will be known as MS twenty-five dash zero zero three four and MS twenty-five dash zero zero three five. Recordation of the plot is contingent on the approval of the zone change. When Planning and Zoning heard this item, they did recommend approval seven to zero.
Applicant present? Ed, you got anything? No? Okay, thank you. Any comments? Questions? I would entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve LU dash zero zero five five dash two five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second at any discussion. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes, motion carried.
Okay, so the final one we have today is LU dash zero zero five seven dash two five. Ed Rintimaki, on behalf of Robert Field, is requesting a variance for a newly proposed lot to remain in the agricultural zoning district. This located in MS twenty-one dash zero zero three four, government lot two, which is the northwest-northeast, government lot three, which is the southwest-northeast, government lot four being the northwest-southeast, and then the northeast-southeast of section three township one fifty-six north, range one oh four west, being Bullbut Township. We have not received official comment back from Bullbut Township. However, during the Planning and Zoning meeting, the chairman of the township said that they were undecided as they were not really sure what was going on up there and/or why. The applicant is requesting the minor subdivision, which will create three lots. The parent properties are approximately two hundred and sixty-three point eight two acres and all within the agricultural zoning district. The two larger lots will remain in the agricultural zoning district while the applicant is requesting a variance for the proposed seventeen point nine four acre lot to also remain in the agricultural zoning district. The seventeen point nine four acre lot contains a tree row and then a hay field that continues continues into Montana. This lot is or would be unbuildable, which is part of the reasoning for it to remain in the agricultural zoning district. The approximately ninety-eight point eight five acre lot contains the original homestead while the larger lot contains majority of the tillable farmland. Access to the newly created lots is taken off of sixty-sixth Street Northwest. The minor subdivision is currently going through the review process and the lots are to be known as MS twenty-five dash zero zero three six, zero zero three seven, and MS twenty-five dash zero zero three eight. Recordation of the plot will be contingent on the approval of the variance. When Planning and Zoning heard this item, on July seventeenth, they did recommend approval seven to zero.
Okay. All right. I figured that's what you were gonna say. Any questions, comments? If not, we can entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve following staff comments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second at any discussion. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Michelle. All right, looks like we have departments. Finance, Christie. I hope you've prepared about a half hour long presentation.
At least.
Great, appreciate that.
I'll make it short. I'm here today with the twenty twenty-six preliminary budget, seeking your approval. The budget in front of you incorporates all the changes that were discussed at our July budget workshop with one exception. The UMDU budget came in last week and it came in three thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars higher than we projected. So on the page one of your packet, I made a little change to the levy request that you had approved. I borrowed three thousand nine eighty-six from the general fund and I'm giving it to UMDU. So I would seek your approval on that change also.
You know, I've been here a long time and that's the first time I've heard it called UMDU.
I'm sorry.
So I was really confused when you started. I got it. I know where we're at, but I've never heard it called that. So I appreciate the new name that we have. Do they know that's their new name?
I don't know. That's what we've in finance call them. I don't I've
It's just fine. You can call them what you want. I guess I I just had to catch up. Sorry about that.
Acronym department.
Gotcha.
So along with the budget approval, remember you set the hearing date for September sixteenth at eight AM in this room. So that also is listed on your budget packet. That's what will be printed on the tax statements once you approve the whole budget.
Okay, what are the wishes, gentlemen, or do you have more questions?
Do we have to approve the amendment first and then the preliminary?
I would think we could do it all at once.
Oh, you can do it at once?
She's Right or wrong, she said go ahead. So yes, we could probably do it with the amendment. So with that, is there a motion?
I would move to approve the preliminary budget as presented with the amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried. And thank you for the new acronym.
You're welcome. Thank you.
It looks like we're gonna talk about sound in this room once again. Then the computer will go down, we'll start over.
Good morning, commission. I see a proposal in front of you. It was a budgeted expense for this year to replace the or to upgrade and replace some of the equipment in this room because, as you all know, we've had some struggles. But that with tariffs and some of the things that increases in price from what we budgeted for last year, we came in a little higher. So that's why I'm here today is to get approval for that higher amount above what was budgeted. Do you have any questions about the equipment?
Any questions for Keith?
Yeah, that's a great question. That's the goal, is to have it work, to get rid of some of the struggles. I mean, what the IT department did to get it running now, I mean, they've bail and wired and band-aided it and it's been working. I mean, for the last four months, it's worked really well. But I mean, it's bail and wire and band-aids right now.
Well, it's an important part of how the public engages in this governance, so we we need it to work and work right, so. With that, I would make a motion to approve with the increased cost.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Who is the second?
Me, Chris.
Cory?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come on down.
Morning.
Good morning.
Been a while since I've been up here on my own.
And we've missed you.
Okay, I have a long memo and I'm gonna go ahead and read it and I'm gonna read it very, very slowly. I'm just kidding, no. You already have the basic memo. There's been additional settlements in the national opioid litigation. One of them is Purdue Pharmacy. Shortly after they got sued, they filed for bankruptcy. So now they've come up with a plan to settle the opioid settlement as well as their bankruptcy plan. And so the proposed settlement for the national the national opioid litigation is that the Sackler family who owns Purdue Pharmacy is gonna pay six point five billion dollars in sixteen payments over a period of fifteen years. And then Purdue itself, from the bankruptcy assets, we're gonna is gonna pay approximately another nine hundred nine hundred million dollars. So you just understand that that's gonna be spread over multiple states, multiple political subdivisions, just lots and lots of different people.
Talk about a house payment. Holy smokes.
Then the second settlement, proposed settlements are eight additional manufacturers. Alvegen, Amneal, Apotex, Hikma, Endeavor, Mylan, Sun, and Cytus. And they're supposed to be paying seven hundred and twenty million dollars total over a period between five and ten years because each of those manufacturers are gonna be paying sometimes some immediately and some not immediately, really. So we need I need like really two different motions from you. The first motion I would need is for you to approve a participation in these settlements and authorize the chair to sign the participation forms for all all nine settlements, really.
So you need one for Purdue?
No, you can you can just do it all. I mean, just
All in one?
Yeah, the in terms of participating in this, you just do one motion. Motion to approve.
With that in mind, I would make the motion to approve it, but on the sad fact that these jerks enrich themselves on the backs of the the population who sorely suffered from this, with those who got addicted to it, so.
Yep.
Would that all make a motion to approve and authorize the chairman to sign?
The participation forms.
The participation forms.
For all nine. I'm sorry.
And all nine.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes, motion carried.
Okay, and then the second motion I need is regarding the Purdue Pharmacy bankruptcy. I need a motion authorizing counties outside legal counsel. I'm not even gonna say what their name is because it's way too hard to say, really. But to submit a vote on behalf of Williams County accepting the proposed bankruptcy plan for Purdue, which includes this, the settlement that you just want to participate in. So it's sort of like, yeah. So do you understand what I'm looking for? So as as a party in here, we have to we have to accept the bankruptcy plan, really, so.
I make a motion to accept the bankruptcy plan as presented and authorize
The our legal counsel to submit a vote in favor of the plan.
And to authorize our legal counsel to submit a vote authorizing the plan.
No seconded. Steve, very well said. We have a motion and second. Is there any discussion?
I really did try to make it as easy as possible, but.
Roll call, Brenda.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Do you have any questions about any of the any of the settlements or any of the any 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 anything about the opioid stuff, so? Okay, that's good. Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Yep.
Okay, looks like Jeremy, you're up, right?
All right, it seems early in the month. Good morning, good morning. Hi, I don't know if you guys have made it out to Cota Ray since we've made all our improvements. Everything's turned out really good. The grass is starting to grow now, not just at Cota Ray, but everywhere. The grass is growing kind of faster. But the the thing with Cota Ray and where it's at, it's a it kind of, you know, sits in a low spot because it's a dam. There's kind of hills. You're going uphill and then right down before each of them. And as of now, there is no designated speed limit on that road other than, you know, the the standard county line of whatever roads are unless they have a speed limit. With the addition of putting that campground on the north side, we see more foot and bike traffic on that road and we'd just like to designate a speed limit for it.
And what would that the you're recommending?
Thirty-five miles an hour. Well, I don't know how long that goes and I don't know any of that. I'm this is I feel like a really great great thing for other people that do speed limits, like Mr. Nelson or other people, but but I mean, and I don't know if thirty-five is better or forty-five, and I don't know exactly how long it should be, if it should go for a mile, if it should go through those two hills. I might just like to see something where we have some controlled speed there and and slow it down a bit.
Dennis, do you have any comment or thought on it? I mean, it is kind of a hole that you're driving down into, so it's probably not the worst thing in the world. You don't want to come over that at fifty-five miles an hour and see a camper turning in.
Maybe twenty-five, so they stay at thirty-five or forty-five. I mean, much advanced warning, get them shut down because yes, that's exactly right, turning in with the camper on on either end.
So you just think from that like hip, you know, warning warning sign before the top of the hill and then top of the hill at the top of the hill?
Yeah.
Or how or how far do you?
Give them give them five. I'm shooting here. I think five hundred feet advance.
Okay, and you I mean, there is thirty-five good or is it or do we want to go to?
I think we go from fifty-five, forty-five, thirty-five, twenty-five. Whichever one is ahead of it. I think we're at forty-five before. I think you can go forty-five right now through there, but I'm not positive off the top of my head. So if it's forty-five, let's get them to thirty-five at the top hill and twenty-five through the bottom and up to the top of the other hill. But that's up to you guys. You guys set the speed limits, so.
If if somebody would want to follow, as Jeremy said, Mr. Nelson's advice there and make that a motion, I should we would accept it.
I would I would make a motion to follow the highway superintendents approve or opinion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Brenda, did you get it? All right, perfect. Roll call, please.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes, motion carried. Okay, I didn't miss any department heads that need to speak, do they? No? Okay, Helen, come on down.
Good morning. All right. Physician report. You see, we are seeking approval to fill one adolescent care attendant position, please.
I would move to approve that position.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Cory?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, you then see in your packet the public comment policy for your review and hopeful approval. North Dakota Legislature did pass a law, I guess we would call it, in which all political subdivisions Political subdivisions, uh, certain boards have to have a public comment policy. And at our budget workshop, we did have just a brief discussion about this so that I could get guidance from you on your wishes. And just to summarize what that includes, although we could limit by, we could choose right here to limit time. We're merely citing the statute that says we could at a particular meeting, if if necessitated, limit time for public comment. But it wouldn't be our intention to set that at this point. And we don't, although the law would allow us to set. Current agenda or some uh, very closely timed agendas as a limitation for what could be talked about. It has not been the history of this board to limit what people can address to the board as a public comment. And so we don't intend to make that change at this time either. However, a future board, of course, could could decide differently if they wanted. So we do need to have this policy in place to comply with the newly passed law. So uh, Karen put this in, you know, mine was a jumbled paragraph and Karen put it in a very nice numbered list. Uh, we, I would, I would seek the permission from the board for the chairman to sign unless you have any changes you'd like us to make.
Okay, what are the wishes, gentlemen?
I would move to approve this policy and authorize chairman to sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, at any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Corey?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, follow up to our last meeting discussion, I did get written word back from the fair board right at the end of last week. That they are willing to accept our offer to purchase the Upper Missouri Valley Fairgrounds. And that they agree to our stipulations as they were included in the staff report last time. Their only concern in the written response that I got from the chairman is they do just want to make sure that they continue to be the. The folks doing the liquor service, you have, having the the exclusive liquor service out in the fairgrounds and that is our, that is our intention. Now, also know that the the curling club has a liquor license during their season for the time in which they lease the curling club. And and it's my understanding that everyone's on the same page about that continuing as well. Uh, I did ask Karen to put together a document that would. Put into legal terms, our intent to purchase and all of the details that you've seen come across in terms of our original offer. And then the staff report, she did complete that work, but I was off on Friday and Monday. So I have a couple of changes I'd like to talk through with Karen before we have a final version for the chairman to sign. So what I'd like is permission from this board for the chairman to sign that intent to purchase document. When Karen and I have have agreed on the last couple of tweaks, there's nothing unusual or unique in it. It merely lays out the details as you've seen them in the two other documents. But Karen hasn't been involved in the discussions and I have, and so there was just a little bit missed in translation there, and we we couldn't connect until this morning.
I'd move to authorize the chairman to sign the intent to purchase.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, um, any discussion? I think my only discussion on it is, uh, once that's signed, I mean, my phone's already blown up. Just with what, how are we gonna go about reaching out to all the groups to let them know this is happening? Kind of everybody take a deep breath, it's gonna take a little time to get through this, but how are we getting them that information?
Right, I got a call from someone to, and again, I've been out of town, so I didn't have a chance to return it, but my intention would be today. To get a hold of by phone. A stake, a contact in each of those stakeholder groups that have some kind of a lease rent use agreement out there. To let them know that the commission did approve the purchase. I've, I, I just haven't been certain that this is gonna happen, so I haven't done a huge amount of legwork. But of course, now to today is the day that I'll do that. So it would be my intention to make those phone calls so that people know I'm the contact. And know that there will be discussion coming regarding the agreement that they have with the Upper Missouri Valley Fair Association. Because we'll need to to either agree to take on those agreements as they are, or we'll need to redo them. It is of course our intent to make life no harder, no different as as best we can. For anybody who's currently using space out there, it is our intent to continue to make it available as it is today. To enhance the quality of life and in, and in fact, to make it better. So, uh, the the. You know, timing of all of this is going to be a question. One of the phone calls, one of the questions that I got was from the fair association person who coordinates, there's some winter storage out there that happens. What's our plan with that, and I said, gosh, I, we gotta get through today. I have to have final approval from the commission and then we'll start working on the details.
Thanks, um, so we have a motion and a second to approve and have the chairman sign, is there any discussion on it? Let's have a roll call, please.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes, motion carried.
Thank you, then, just one other thing on the fairgrounds item. Along the way here, I'll of course, hopefully by next meeting, I'll have some additional updates for you on where we're headed, what we think the timing will be. The other thing that we'll work on in the coming, I would think, couple of months, is that we'll put together a budget. That would be, uh, just so that we can anticipate for twenty twenty, the rest of twenty five, when we understand the timing of the purchase. And then for twenty twenty six, what do we think, uh, we will need to allocate out of our budget to manage the site? And I'll bring that to you for approval as well.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, anything else for me?
Nope, I think that covers it, um. Anybody on the board have anything extra, no? Okay. We are adjourned.